...will be attending. And from past news in December, Friday, December fifteenth, several music groups in Gilderland performed at Colony Center, Colony Centers Barnes Noble. February third is the Pops concert at GHS. And on Monday, January twenty-second starts Regent's Testing here at GHS, and that will last until January twenty-sixth. And with student government, with the student government, we are trying to make Gilderland a better place. And recently, we've been planning to start a fundraiser at Chipotle, as I mentioned at the last meeting. And very soon, we are thinking of starting a raffle with the student body to improve student engagement with the community, if you know what I mean. And quarter two will be ending on January twenty-sixth, which is this month. Thank you, everyone.
Great, thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is public comment number one. Um, we have Michael Horelcheck. And just as a reminder, in accordance with our policy, please try to keep your comments to between three and five minutes. Thank you.
My name is Michael Horelcheck. I'm a Gilderland graduate and parent of three children currently attending Gilderland Elementary School. And I'm here to share my perspective on the kindergarten entrance age policy and the board's discussions about potentially modifying it. A few days ago, I emailed my thoughts on the issue to all of the members of the board, but I felt I should come and also comment publicly. I appreciate the time that the board has taken discussing and considering the possibility of changing the current policy, and I thank you for listening to me tonight. And in the interest of full disclosure, I'll say at the outset, I do have a personal interest in this policy. My fourth and youngest child will turn five years old on December fifth, only four days after the age cutoff for kindergarten attendance. The board's discussions concerning the age policy have tended to revolve around the possibility of a policy similar to the one in place at Shenandoah, which provides a pathway for children born after the age cutoff to attend kindergarten, but only if those children are independently assessed and able to meet fairly rigorous standards of academic readiness and socio-emotional maturity. While I welcome a change that would give parents more room to consider kindergarten entry based on their children's individual needs, I fully understand the importance of objective standards and even quite rigorous ones. So a policy like Shen's strikes me as entirely reasonable. I would like to focus my remaining remarks tonight on two concerns that I've heard expressed about adopting such a policy in Gilderland. First, concerns have been expressed about the detrimental effect on children who are pushed into kindergarten before they are ready. While this is unquestionably a legitimate concern, it seems somewhat misplaced if the population at issue are those few children who have been tested and have met the rigorous standards for academic and social readiness. This seems like an especially odd concern, given that Gilderland, unlike many other schools in the area, requires no assessment of entering kindergarteners who meet the age cutoff, even if only by a few days or weeks. The second concern I would like to address is the possibility that adding younger students to kindergarten classes would widen the already substantial range of abilities and maturity levels found in entering kindergarteners. Again, this concern seems misplaced if the students we're looking at are those few who have already demonstrated that they're toward the higher end of the range for kindergarten readiness. These children pose no risk of extending the range of abilities at the bottom end of that range. On the contrary, when considering these few students to whom the new policy would make a difference, the opposite concern seems more likely. The same students who would be capable of achieving the required high marks on assessments for school readiness are those who, if required to wait an additional year to attend kindergarten, are most likely to be performing well beyond the capabilities of many of their peers and are likely to extend the range of abilities of entering students on the top end. And while the harms from sending a child too early are obvious, I urge the board not to ignore the very real negative impacts on children who are kindergarten-ready but forced to sit out for an entire academic year. These children may find themselves bored by a kindergarten curriculum that isn't suited to their academic ability and become disengaged from school due to a lack of sufficient challenging material. My primary message is that the district should allow for the most appropriate path for each individual student, rather than relying on across-the-board rules that don't adequately capture individual variation in the pace of development. Something like Shenandoah's approach seems like a reasonable starting point. And judging by Shen's experience, at a previous board meeting, we've heard estimates that two to three children a year apply for the exception. This wouldn't be opening up the floodgates. I'd be more than happy to discuss this further with any of the board members at your convenience. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one other potential public comment, and that is Stephanie Kozier.
I'm Sophie Gertchikoff.
And I'm Anna Capuano.
And we are here on behalf of the Engineering Club we established in 2016 at Gilderland High School. We'd like to thank you for the opportunity to voice our concerns. Women are severely underrepresented in the engineering field. Currently, in the United States, only fourteen percent of engineers are women. The reasons include lack of strong female engineering role models, fewer technical problem-solving opportunities compared to boys, and lack of confidence. The goal of our club is to break the stereotype linking masculinity to technology, encourage girls to explore science and engineering, help them build skills and confidence by participating in different technical activities, and expose them to successful female engineering role models that we invite as speakers.
No one is excluded from participation in our club. If interested in support of our agenda, boys are welcome to join, attend our meetings, listen to the speakers, and participate in the activities. However, not allowing our club to be called E4G, Engineering for Girls, goes against our main purpose, which is to narrow the gender gap in the engineering field. We wanted to know our school's community's opinion on the name E4G in our club schools. And through talking to many lunch tables and students around the school, we've received approval and positive thoughts from approximately three hundred students, boys and girls. Gender diversity is extremely important because women often bring different perspective to solving problems and the range of viewpoints is beneficial to an engineering team. There are a number of organizations that are dedicated to expanding girls' participation in the STEM field. Girls Who Code, Girls Inc., Girls Start, Society of Women Engineers, and that's just a few. We want to do our job empowering girls within Gilderland High School so that more of them can be exposed to engineering, and we feel that this would be best accomplished if our club was called Engineering for Girls. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda this evening is our 2018-19 budget development presentation. Neil?
Good evening. We really have two topics to discuss tonight, but they're very much intertwined, and you'll see that as we go through the presentation. So we have a rollover budget projection, and also, we're going to talk about our fund balance and reserves. As you know, it's gotten a little more complicated recently at the federal level, and that has placed some complications on the state level. We have uncertainty over federal aid and the impact on state finances without a federal budget in place. And we also have a new tax system. So there's some new uncertainty that we haven't had in other years on these big topics. The New York State is projecting a mid-year budget deficit of $4.4 billion. The governor's talked about $4 billion. The mid-year update says $4.4, so it's somewhere between $4 and $4.4 billion. Also, the teachers' retirement system employer contribution rate will be increasing next year, so that's another factor in the development of the budget. And then finally, we have stagnant revenue, increased expenses, and our tax levy growth is capped at 2.3%. So a lot going on in the development of next year's budget. So going back to the state and the fiscal year update, they do a mid-year update. And right now, overall tax receipts are $692 million lower than projected. A lot of it has to do with personal income tax, otherwise known as PIT. That's down $1.1 billion. Other taxes are offsetting that a little bit. They're up $4.408 million. But still, there's an overall reduction in revenue from personal income tax. A couple of theories out there, and I can't claim credit for these, but this is what's out there, that high-income earners may have delayed profit-taking and bonus claiming, and that there's also a movement of high-income households to other states. When we talk about a rollover budget, and this is something we do prior to actually developing the budget, is looking at what we currently have in place and just rolling that forward. So not what we might be thinking about in terms of additions or changes to the budget, but just taking what we have and bringing that forward and see what the impact is. So we would start by assuming that all staffing and programs remain in place. And then what we would do is we would look at revenues and expenses, and we would focus on known data or reasonably anticipated data that we can apply to that and come up with better, more realistic estimates based on what we really can pinpoint at this point in time, which is early in the process. And we use data, historical data as a data point for us, as well as outside organizations that can sometimes give us information. We're going to be talking a little bit about the retirement system some more. That's an outside organization that gives us information that helps us with our estimates for the coming year. In terms of the calculation itself of the rollover budget, we're looking at an expenditure increase of $3.2 million or 3.3%. Our revenue's pretty much flat. It's only an increase overall of $2,000, which is conspicuous in the whole process. So in order to meet that need of an increase of $3.2 million, we would have to have the tax levy, the property tax levy, increase $3.2 million because we have no other revenue growth to offset that increase in expenses. We've calculated on a preliminary calculation of our tax levy limit, and the growth there is $1.6 million. So with our $3.2 million in additional expenses, taxes can only go up $1.6 million. So we would need to look for reductions in expenses or increases in revenues totaling $1.6 million. And that would allow us to remain under the tax levy limit threshold. So this is a simple majority vote. If we went above that, it would be a supermajority vote, which requires sixty percent of the voters to pass the budget. In terms of the expenditure increases themselves, we're projecting salaries to increase $1.7 million. Benefits, close to $2 million increase. In addition, we have health insurance in there. We have life insurance, our retirement system contribution, workers' compensation, unemployment. So there's a lot of categories in the benefit line. Equipment, supplies, and textbooks. We're looking at a pretty modest increase of 1% there. That's a $22,000 additional. We have contracted services and BOSI services. We're projecting to go up $202,000. And then we are reducing our debt. This is like our mortgage payments. We have borrowed money from construction projects, paying that down over time. So we have some debt rolling off. That's going to save us $670,000 next year. So overall, again, we're at that $3.2 million in terms of overall expenditure increases. In terms of revenue, state aid, we're looking at a reduction overall of about $154,000. Foundation aid, we don't have any indication yet of what that's going to look like at the state level. We're assuming it's going to be flat just because of the news that's out there around the federal government and some of the state news that we've seen. So we're assuming that basic amount of aid per pupil is going to remain flat, and we'll see no increase. We do have some increases in our expenditure-driven aids, like transportation and BOSI's aid and excess cost aid, which is students with disabilities. But the basic one that's driving the state aid reduction here is building aid. So as our debt goes down, so does our aid. And they work hand-in-hand. They'll go up together as well. So that's really almost exclusively related to a reduction in building aid. In terms of investment earnings, we're looking at an increase of $100,000 there. The board approved an initiative to get into a municipal cooperative for investments throughout the state of New York with other school districts and municipalities. That's worked out really well for us this year. Give credit to John Rizzo, our treasurer, for researching that, bringing it to our attention. We're seeing the effects of that in terms of higher interest yields this year, and we expect that to continue into next year. So we're looking at an additional $100,000 for investment earnings, which is a really good piece of work for this coming year. In terms of miscellaneous revenues, various revenue categories, we're looking at an increase overall of $56,000. So again, when you take the reduction in state aid and add the increased revenue, we're only up $2,000 on a rollover budget basis in terms of revenue. So how do we make up the deficit? Unfortunately, we've been through this before and not that long ago. Tough choices and difficult decisions. We're going to have to look again very closely at programs and staffing. State aid, until we get some information on state aid, we really don't know where we're going to be. So this is, I think, pretty much, hopefully, worst-case scenario that we're presenting with really no growth. And then fund balance and reserves, and that's tying in the second part of this. And we'll talk a lot more about fund balance and reserves. But this is the task at hand for us early on in the budget process. So what is fund balance? And I think the easiest way to think about this is just a savings account. So fund balance is an accounting term. So, but you can just think of it as just a general savings account. And at the end of each year, we have the general fund, which is what our budget is comprised of. And we might have a balance in our funds, and that's where the fund balance terminology comes from, because we either have lower expenditures than anticipated or greater revenues than anticipated. And that accumulates over time. So if we spend less in a particular area, say on gas, diesel, and gasoline, we'll have savings in the budget, and that can accrue. Same sort of thing. We have revenue growth now from what I just talked about in terms of the municipal cooperative for investments. So we'll have greater interest earnings than we anticipated. That adds to our savings account as well, and that can accumulate. There is a legal limit on how much that we can have in our fund balance, and it's no more than 4% of the following year's budget amount. And that we also have the ability to appropriate some of that as a source of revenue. So we can take that in your market and say, as we develop our budget, we have certain sources of revenue. We have state aid, and we have some local revenue sources. We have the property tax. But we can also say we have some money in savings that we're going to use to help balance out the budget. And you can kind of think of it as if you were in the situation where you have expenses and revenue, and you have a gap between those two, and you might use your savings account for some period of time, saying, I have money in my savings account. Going to supplement my revenue. It's that same sort of idea to balance your expenses. Another way to think about this is a financial advisor would tell somebody, you need to save enough money to cover three to six months of expenses just because you might have a job loss or other catastrophic event. It's the same idea here. We have a savings account that we can go to if we have some unforeseen situations occur that will help us through that process. Reserve funds are a little different animal. These are what I would call specialized savings accounts, designated for particular purposes. And there's thirteen by law that we can use for reasonably anticipated expenses. And each of them has a set of rules that go along with them, and voter approval in some cases may or may not be required. And there's different steps in the process to how to establish them, how to fund them, how to spend them, and how to close them. So we have to follow all of those rules when we establish and utilize a reserve fund. And again, just like fund balance, we can appropriate money from reserve funds that are designated savings accounts as a source of revenue of lower property taxes of these funds as well. A parallel example to a reserve fund is establishing a college savings account. So you're designating a special savings account that you're going to hold money for one specific purpose, and for only that purpose, you're not going to mingle it with your other general savings. There's a lot of advantages to having fund balance and reserves accounts. We have that flexibility of whether short-term financial instability, just like what we, in our own lives, use our savings account for, is from time to time, you need to draw and help meet a short-term need. We have that same advantage here. We don't have to borrow money and pay interest if we have cash on hand that we can use in those situations. If we have larger cash reserves, we have higher credit worthiness. And so we get lower rates when we go to borrow money. And that has a substantial impact over the long term particularly. And we can also use it to help stabilize our tax rate and our yearly budget. And that was a process that I was just talking about. When you have these situations occur, you can help mitigate that through having these savings accounts. There are some pitfalls associated with them as well. You can't use them as a recurring source of revenue. So it's just like a bank account. If you have $3,000 in your savings account, but you need to use $1,000 each year just to meet your expenses, after three years, you're going to be out of money, and then you have to deal with the situation. So here, we don't want to put ourselves in a situation of continuing to rely on drawing from those sources of revenue. If so, you get a revenue gap, and then you will have to make cuts to your expenditure budget to balance your budget. You also can use those for unanticipated increases in expenditures, loss of revenues. Well, if you have that situation occur, you may need to go into a budget freeze, which is a difficult process in a school district to have to endure. And the important thing with all of this is to make sure they're carefully managed. So if you are using fund balance and are using reserves in the short term, you need to look at not only the short-term impact, but the potential long-term impact, and make sure you're managing that so you don't end up in one of these situations that's untenable at the end of a period of time. As I mentioned recently, we have come through a financial crisis. We did have to rely on the use of fund balance and reserves to help get through that. You can see back in 2007-08, we had $11.4 million in fund balance and reserves. Seven years later, it was cut almost in half, down to $5.8 million. But we needed to use that, those resources, on a reoccurring basis to help close budget deficits and budget gaps. And we're able to do that successfully, and we're able to manage it over time. So there were still a number of difficult decisions that had to be made, and cuts in programs and staffing. But it was our careful use of that money as well over time to help make it all work and still be manageable for a long-term reliability. So we did suffer some impacts from taking those steps to lower our fund balance and reserves. We were designated susceptible to fiscal stress by the Office of the State Comptroller. We did have our bond rating lowered. That did lead to higher borrowing costs, higher interest rate that we would have to pay on our borrowing. And also leaves us with less options for balancing budgets. We know that property taxes are capped. If you have revenue losses in other areas, ultimately, you have to get to budget expenditure reductions to balance your budget. Just to show you where we are right now, and this is as of the end of our fiscal year on June 30th, 2017, in terms of our fund balance, our general savings account, we have $3.9 million. And then we have a number of reserve funds. We don't utilize all of the thirteen that we're able to utilize. These are the ones that we utilize. Just go through them quickly. Capital, that's for capital improvements to our buildings, construction projects. Employee benefit liability, that's for payments for employees. It could be related to sick time, for example. Tax surstrary, these are tax challenges where somebody's challenging their assessment, and we have to refund money as a result of that. Unemployment is self-explanatory. Retirement contributions, we have both the employee's retirement system and the teacher's retirement system. Money set aside for those contributions. Workers' compensation costs, it could be claims or administration relating to workers' compensation. And then there's a small amount for repairs, and these are more modest repairs that might be encountered, emergency-type repairs, boiler failure, and so on. But you can see in those designated reserve accounts, there's another $7.8 million. So where do we stand in comparison to our counterparts in the suburban council? This shows you the thirteen school districts in the suburban council. And what this chart is illustrating is the percentage of fund balance and reserves relative to the expenditure budget, so as a percentage. So the bar graph is not the important thing. The yellow dots and the percentages are the more telling pieces of information. You can see where Gilderland, we're at 10.73% of expenditures, that dollar amount that I just showed you, relative to the overall budget. That is the lowest of the thirteen suburban council schools and has been four out of the past five years. That gives you a look at across the suburban council how much money people have in fund balance and reserves relative to us. And we are on the low side. We asked our board again this year a response to a survey about their comfort level in using fund balances as a revenue source for the 2018-19 budget. You can see the responses here, none or as little as possible. Six responses, same as the current year. We had two responses, and more than the current year, one response. I will say, this survey was sent out before we had rollover budget information. I think we probably went back and surveyed at this point. There might be a change of heart in terms of what we're faced with and how we might have to manage it. But that was the preliminary thinking of our board before we had this information available to us. So what are some of our next steps in the process? We're eagerly awaiting to hear what news we might have from the release of the executive budget proposal by Governor Cuomo that's slated for January 16th. Typically, around that same time, we'll get state aid runs, tentative state aid runs. They're still subject to the final adoption of the budget by the state legislature at the end of March or by April 1st. But at least it gives us some sort of indication of what type of state aid we might be receiving if we get those runs. We are certainly well in the throes of budget development work. We're going to continue to do that and work with actual numbers apart from the rollover that we did, which was very broad. And we're going to be very focused on our work now in getting actual numbers for actual expenditures and revenue. We are going to be seeking community input. Our communications committee is going to be meeting and talking about what form that may take. Like every other year, we've involved the community in the budget development process. Also, this year, as in other difficult years, legislative advocacy is going to be a big issue. At state level, there may be less money. There's going to be a number of needs once again. We want to make sure some money comes towards schools, sufficient amount comes to school to meet the needs of students. And then finally, in the short term, the superintendent's draft budget proposal will be released on March 6th. From that point, we still have about a month to be able to work through the process of turning that into a final adopted budget, which the board will do sometime in early April, which will then go to the community in May for a vote. And that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions from the board?
I have a question about the teacher's retirement system contribution. You said it's going to be increased this year?
Yes.
Now, I thought that was sort of based on the stock market and how Wallo was doing.
Yes.
Why are we...
That's a good question, because it seems to be counterintuitive. The stock market's rolling along like it never has been before, yet we're seeing the need for a higher contribution rate from the teacher's retirement system, not from the employee's retirement system. So the employee's retirement system rate's going to go down a little bit. Teacher's retirement system is going up. Their actuary reexamined their financial information this year, and looking forward is projecting a lower rate of return. So what they're anticipating is the stock market's not going to continue to trend upward forever. It's going to tail off, and what they're trying to do is capture that in the long-term view, that they will not be seeing the higher rates of returns that they have the past few years continue on into the future. So they're backing that down. So as a result of the rate of return, future rate of return being lower, they're feeling like they need more contributions from school district, from employers, to help fund the system if it's not coming from investment earnings.
It just seems strange, because when the market was down, we were really walloped and we're still asking for more.
There's also a five-year rolling average. So it's one-fifth of any good year, a bad year goes on or off every year. So the increase is not, you're not getting next year's increase based on current year performance. You're getting it over a five-year period. So there's always going to be a lead lag in every financial upturn or downturn with the retirement systems. They both work the same way in terms of the five-year averaging.
Neil, does the 4% limit that you spoke about only refer to the fund balance or also reserve as the whole thing? Or just the fund balance?
Just the fund balance.
And all, everyone has to agree to that or follow that?
Yes, that's a state law, so...
So that variety that you saw in the chart is really a reflection of reserve accounts that are so...
So we have the general savings account, So we have the general, general savings account, which I would call the fund balance, so that can, that can only be 4% of next year's budget in terms of that amount. The designated reserves, those lists, there really are no rules about how much you may maintain in those, although this year, we are going to have to have that as part of our budget materials. There was a new law passed, so basically saying how much do you have in there, describing the reserves you have, how much money you have in there, and we'll have to bring that to the board. We did that a little bit last year, but we found out it was delayed a year and we had that prepared, but we'll be coming back again this spring to detail all of those reserve accounts, how much money we have in, and the board's methodology for how much they feel should be in those reserves.
Other questions? Thank you, Neil.
Okay, thank you.
The next item on our agenda is approval of the consent agenda items, which consist of the minutes from December 5th, 2017, the CPSE and CSE recommendations, personnel action items, a textbook, and the financials. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Barbara, second, Seema. Are there questions or comments? Teresa?
I actually just so happened to notice that they, that I'm in as the executive session as in an A. I wasn't there for the executive session. I noticed it at the, the meeting, I was there. I appeared late, and that's documented correctly, but I just noticed that I'm in executive session and I wasn't there.
Sure. Linda, can we make that change to the minutes? Okay. Alan?
Plus, since I was absent for both, I need to abstain.
Abstain from the December 5th? Okay. Tim, same. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. With those minor notes, motion to approve the consent agenda? I am opposed, and that passes 9-0 with the exception of the two abstentions for the meeting minutes of December 5th. Next item on our agenda is the information items, curriculum and instruction. Damian?
Thank you very much. I'd like to start by extending congratulations to sophomore Amy Chen, who has been chosen to represent the Gilderland High School at the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Conference this spring. Gilderland High School 10th grader Colin Ingram will also be attending the conference as an alternate. Founded in 1958, the Hugh O'Brien Leadership Conference's mission is to inspire and develop a global community of youth and volunteers to a life of dedicated, dedicated to leadership, service, and innovation. Programs provide students selected by their schools to participate in unique leadership training, service learning, and motivation-building experiences. This year's program will take place in Oneonta from June 1st through 3rd. A high school faculty committee selected by Amy and Colin to represent the district for having one or more of the following: outstanding oral and written communication skills, critical and/or creative thinking, creative problem-solving, strong decision-making skills, sensitive to the needs of or concerns of others, charismatic personality, meaning others gravitate toward him or her, courage to speak out for one's beliefs, courage to challenge authority, and participation in community service activities. So congratulations to Amy and Colin. As you heard previously, the suburban scholastic council music festival will be held at Columbia High School on Saturday, January 13th. Over 300 talented music students were selected from 15 suburban council schools. The groups performing this year include a high school band, chorus and orchestra, as well as the middle school jazz band. The Gilderland Music Department is pleased to announce that 24 students were selected to participate. Performing in the Symphony Orchestra under the direction of James Tapia of Syracuse University will be Amy Chen on violin, Elizabeth Novak on bassoon, Jonathan LaSalle on horn, and Thomas Jambo Nathan, excuse me, on percussion, sorry if I butchered my name. The concert band includes Gilderland High School students Tracy Way on flute, Anna Capuano and Sarah Radine on clarinet, Matthew Creighton on alto sax, Sterling Durphy, Aiden Fusco and Gustavo Gonzalez, and Alex Jambo Nathan, and Allison Coe on trumpet. Marie Collison and Glenn Treshel on horn, Aiden Doyle and Vivian Redman on trombone, Alexander Evans on tuba. They will perform under the direction of Matt Westgate from UMass Amherst. And the vocalists selected to sing with the concert choir include Colin Dean Ingram, Julia Cuck, and Marielle Zhao. These students will perform under the direction of Neil Bryson of the Bath Central School District. William Angus and John Giordano on tenor sax, and Bodan Canau on baritone sax were selected by audition to perform in the middle school jazz ensemble led by jazz educator Tom Camp. And of course, we want to extend congratulations to all of these musicians, their teachers, Susan Kiro, Kathleen Ellinger, Claudia Golub, Lee Russo, Ray Jean Teeter, Jason Utter, and Alexis Ziemek. And the concert will be held again on January 13th at Columbia High School. It begins at 2 o'clock, and it is free and open to the public. Any additional information can be sought through Lori Hirschenhardt, the music administrator, and it is also on the district website. And my final item tonight will be a little bit of video sharing, actually, unless Principal Tom Lutzick to assist me with this. I've included a link to a series of commercials that were recently reported on the Gilderland High School reporter, and these commercials were produced by students who are promoting a number of science electives that we were offering at the high school. The course offerings just came out about a month ago or so, and they were interested in promoting them as much as they possibly could, so we're going to share them with you.
Sweet. Today's the big release of the curriculum guide for the next year. While you may need to take some required courses, GHS offers several electives as well. Today, we profiled the science department and the, and the electives they'll be offering next year.
HPA2?
Shh.
Fanpage1?
Shh.
EvanBauer?
Shh.
Eva2? Biotechnology? A class for learning, a class for life.
Puerto Rico's governor is telling people to stay calm, but he's warning that the island is on the verge of losing communication.
Dreams filling the streets of Mexico City. Buildings break apart and fear floods the Capitol.
Fires in Anaheim have lit up skies over Walt Disney Land. Hurricane-force winds pushed the flames so fast, firefighters couldn't keep up.
A tsunami 23 feet high, sweeping away everything in its path. And massive debris fields surging across villages hit by a wall of water.
Tomorrow, we'll take a look at the art electives, and on Wednesday, we'll hear from English. If you woke up this morning thinking 10 days to go...
That's great. There you go.
That's great. Thank you, Damian. That was great.
That was neat.
I want to take some of those cloruses home. Okay. The next...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Will the business department be doing commercials too?
Um, I haven't... Tom, do you know by any chance, will the business department be doing any commercials?
Can we see all the different commercials? Those are great.
Soon as I get my hands on them.
Fantastic, thank you.
Since it said coming 2018-2019, that's coming for next school year, not this semester coming.
Right.
January.
Anyone else? Okay. Next, we have superintendent information. Murray?
Great, thanks. So as Neil alluded during his presentation, we are gearing up to begin our community engagement process for the 2018-19 budget. We have updated our budget infographic, which explains to the community how, when, and where they can engage with us with providing feedback as we work through the process. One of the pieces that we'll be doing is another online survey, similar to the one that we did last year. We'll be sending a link to that home with our infographic probably next week. We're waiting till after the governor releases his budget. And then, on Thursday morning, our communications committee is meeting, and we're going to talk some more about fine-tuning our plan. Since we have new information about the challenges before us, our community engagement process will become ever more critical, so we will work through those details and have lots more opportunities as the season unfolds.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Murray? Okay. Next, we move to board president information. There are three items this evening, and the first relates to Board of Education policy reviews. There are a number of policies provided this evening for a first read, letters A through O, you will see. Barbara, did you want to comment on any of these, or...
Most of them basically have to do with minor changes or brand-new policies that we're required to have. One policy that we did have, the inter-scholastic athletic placement process, was brought to our attention that we were the only suburban council schools that didn't allow 7th graders to participate on the varsity level, the JV level. And the policy committee met, talked with Regan, and are proposing a change there that would allow the 7th graders to participate in contact sports, as well as golf and things like that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
So, and the alcohol and drug testing for the bus drivers is a policy that we do have, but they've added two more drugs for testing onto the bus drivers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item relates to the Gilderland Public Library and a land transfer. In September, the district was approached by library director Tim Wiles and library board president Brian Best regarding the potential transfer of two parcels of property along Western Ave that were acquired by the library but are currently not being used. Tim Wiles and Brian Best attended the Business Practices Committee meeting on September 20th and shared that the two parcels recently had their taxable status changed from exempt to taxable. Parshals owned by municipal entities other than school districts may be taxed if not used for a purpose related to the mission of the municipal entity. A determination was made that the library could not establish a public use for the vacant property, and therefore those parcels were placed on the tax roll. As a result, this year, the library is obligated to pay $5,353 in town and school taxes. If the parcels were to be gifted to the school district, which already owns the land on which the library is constructed, those parcels would automatically regain their former, their former tax-exempt status. In order for that to occur, both the library trustees and the school board would need to pass resolutions agreeing to transfer the parcels and file the deed transfer with Albany County prior to the establishment of the new tax rule on March 1, 2018. As I just said, the Business Practices Committee met to discuss this, and I think currently our school attorney, as well as the library attorney, are looking at the legal issues associated with this transfer to see if there would be any risks or liabilities to the district, and that is still ongoing right, Neil?
That's correct. What we will be requesting from the library, should the board agree to go forward with this, is some indemnification clause, particularly around any environmental hazards that we may not be aware of in terms of accepting the property. So it seems to be a pretty easy thing to do from the attorney's point of view, so that provision would need to be in there, but both attorneys are involved in terms of trying to get the paperwork together to effectuate the transfer.
Okay. And I think the, Kathy, you can speak to this, the Business Practices Committee seemed pretty comfortable with this as long as there weren't any risks that came to the surface.
That's correct. I think, yeah, we were, I don't think the Business Practices Committee had any particular problem with it, legal, legal things aside.
Okay. So does anybody want to comment on this topic?
I just have a question.
Sure.
If we, if we do get the property, what will we do with it?
We currently don't have any plans, none that was presented by the library, none that we have discussed, so right now, it's merely a way to avoid the library having to pay taxes. But certainly, we do own the property that the library is constructed on, so we already do have ownership of property within that area. If the library were to need it down the road, then for a public pers, purpose, it could be transferred back, gifted from one municipal entity to the other, as we understand it. So in this situation, the library would be gifting it to the school district. Our understanding that down the road, the school board could gift it back to the library if there were a need arose there.
Is there any cost to own it? I mean, do we have any maintenance issues or anything we have to do to upkeep the land or anything like that?
It's vacant property, so...
Okay. Is there a restriction to sell it, if we would deem that it would be worthy to sell? If we were deeded it, if it was deeded to us?
We've not discussed any restrictions on the deed, so...
Barbara?
Well, it's my understanding, I think Peter's the one that suggested it, is that once the transfer is made, it becomes one parcel?
That's a possibility to merge. There's actually four parcels involved, with the one the library sits on, one that they have for a parking lot that they've acquired, and then these two other parcels. We, Murray and I, actually met with, with Peter, and we discussed putting them together, merging them into one parcel. I guess there might be some disadvantages down the road from doing so. If it were one parcel and then we wanted to separate them again for some reason, now we're into the town zoning and planning board's property on Western Avenue, and he said it might be much more difficult to unmerge them back to their former status of individual parcels. It might be better to just leave them as individual parcels, hold the title in that manner. Give us more flexibility down the road.
What would be the advantage of merging them into one?
I don't know if there's a particular advantage to merging them into one, but the town originally approached us with that concept of putting it into one, but more conversations that we've had with the town leads us to believe there is no real advantage or need to do that. They can remain as separate parcels owned by the school district.
Are there any other questions or comments on this for now? Okay. I think there will be more to come when we have more information to provide.
Yes, I think the library's planning to meet and discuss the transfer at their next meeting, so if that were to occur and they were agreeable to that, the library board, then we would be coming back to the school board, and we'd have to have a resolution drafted by the attorneys for the transfer and get our board's approval, as well as we understand it needs to be a resolution approved by both the governing boards in order for the, the transfer to occur.
Okay. Thank you. And the next item relates to an update on our board retreat that we had on December 19th. As you will recall, we, in lieu of having a meeting on that day, had a board retreat, which was kind of the first of maybe more than one meeting with the gentleman that we used to facilitate the retreat. Does anybody have any thoughts on how the retreat went, and should we continue on? Judy?
Well, I, I thought it was good. It was, it was quite powerful. It made, he demanded that we be thinking and relating, and... It made... He demanded that we be thinking and relating and also said that one meeting doesn't usually cover it and I think that it would be good if we then followed up.
Gloria?
I think what was good about it is we don't have an opportunity as individuals, as a group, to meet and get to know each other and we were always in this formal setting. So it was nice on the retreat to get to just talk about things, about ourselves, about, you know, our thoughts about different topics, just to get to know each other. Because I think as a group, you know, we're making some really important decisions as a group and I think the fact that we need to trust each other and even though we may disagree, that we trust each of us. And I think getting to know each other is a big step in that, so I thought it was definitely worthwhile.
Anyone else? Okay, if we can kind of go around the table and get a feel from whether each of you would be willing to continue with another session. I can start, Tim, with you.
I would not.
Okay. Do you want to elaborate or just, that's okay?
Just no.
Okay. Alan?
I'd be willing to participate.
Okay. Teresa?
I'd be willing.
Barbara?
Same here.
Seema?
Yes.
Gloria?
Yes.
Judy?
Yep.
Kathy?
I would, I mean, I'm not thrilled about it, I guess.
Okay, yeah, I kind of feel similar to Kathy, but it looks like we have a majority that would be willing to continue on, so Marie, how do we... What are our next steps with that? Do you, Neil?
So I will follow up with Robert. He had contacted me shortly after we met, kind of get a sense of how did things go because he had a long drive home that evening and I told him that we would be following up today and that I would be in touch. So what I will do is get a sense of available dates from him and kind of go from there.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next we move on to action items, school business management. Neil?
Thank you Christine. First item this evening is the approval of service agreements and these are for the provision of programs and services for students whose needs are best met through an alternative education program. The original request had four agreements. We pulled one today. It was for next school year and we felt that we don't know the students yet or the services, so Northeast Rehabilitation Services, we would not like to approve tonight, but we would like to approve the other three, which are South... St. Anne's Institute, South Colony School District, and Florence Hospital.
Okay. And we can approve all three of them together?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve these three service agreements? Judy, second. Gloria? Are there any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero.
Next we have an intermunicipal transportation agreement and in this case, South Colony will be transporting our students attending Catholic High School in Troy to school in the morning. And they will also be transporting our students in the afternoon from Central High School in Troy to St. Gregory's School in Loudenville. So another great opportunity of sharing amongst suburban council school districts in terms of transportation services, all going to many of the same schools, so when there's opportunities to help each other out, we do. And certainly commend South Colony for helping us out with this particular situation.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the transportation agreement? Barbara, second. Seema? Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero.
Next, we have a recommendation from the Business Practices Committee to appoint CS Arch for our... as the architect for our pre-refereendum and post-refereendum services related to the capital construction problem, project under consideration. So we have the facilities committee composition established for that. We'd like to move forward this spring. The board has given authorization to do that. We will need the assistance of an architect to help us with that process. We've worked with CS Arch since 2007. They've been with us through two large scale capital construction projects. We work extremely well together. We have the same team that has been in place with CS Arch for the entire time that we've been with them. They've committed to carrying that team forward. They know our expectations, they know our school districts really well, they survey all of our buildings on an annual basis. And like I said, they've demonstrated a strong working relationship in our project. Like most professional services, it's the quality of the people that are most important. We have a quality team who works well with us, who's diligent, who's meeting our expectations and knows our buildings inside and out, so it's a natural fit and one that I believe our Business Practices Committee representatives saw when we discussed this and we'd like to continue to move forward with them in this process.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the professional services agreement? Kathy, second. Teresa? Are there any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero.
Similar... similar we, I should say. We're recommending that we turn our construction company also to assist the facilities committee in the pre-refereendum phase of construction. Turn to Construction was the construction management firm on our most recent capital project, first time working with them. Again, they performed extremely well. They have a strong history in school district projects throughout New York State, throughout the country. They're a large company, they have a lot of work in this particular area. They've worked with CS Arch on a number of projects outside of our own. The relationship worked well last year and there's certainly value to having the construction management firm as part of the pre-refereendum services where we're talking about costing out items, we're talking about how do we... how is it best to construct things as we talk about conceptual designs, what makes sense, where's the best place to spend your money, how to get the most bang for your buck, seeing potential problems, issues, concerns, advising the committee on not the design side, which is what the architects do, but on the construction side. And we really need both of those perspectives to help marry them together so that we do have a good project that we can bring before the community. We need to know both sides of the equation. So again, we're recommending that the board appoint Turner for the pre-refereendum phase of the facilities committee process.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve this professional services agreement? Judy, second. Kathy? Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero.
And then finally this evening, we have more donations, a regular occurrence now at our board meetings. We received a bellicating case from Mrs. Laura Asaf and bongo drums, keyboard, and music books from Mrs. Sujada Chaudry. So again, thank you for those donations.
May I have a motion to accept the donations? Barbara, second. Seema? Any questions or comments?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, yes, we're lucky to get all these donations.
I know, it's awesome.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Thank you Neil. Now we move to board president action items. And again, we have a number of policies that have been on for a first read in the past and are now here for approval, which includes policy number 2330, executive sessions, 4526.1, internet safety policy and the internet safety regulation, 5300.55, corporal punishment policy, and 8505, charging school meals. I imagine everybody's had a chance to read through these. May I have a motion to approve the policies? Alan, second. Teresa? Are there any questions or comments? Barbara, do you have any to add or...
No, we didn't hear from anybody, so I think they're good to go.
Okay, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero.
Christine, can I just thank Deb Sim who is brand spanking new as secretary of the superintendent, whose job is to prepare these to look so lovely for the board's work. And it was her fourth day on the job and had the longest list of policies we've had in a while, so I just want to be on the record to say, thank you Deb, great job.
Thank you Deb. Linda, you're going to note that in the minutes? Now we move on to board committee reports. Audit, Teresa?
We have a meeting scheduled... no, we don't. Right Neil? Where is that one?
No meeting scheduled?
No.
Okay. Business practices, Kathy?
Well, we're going to meet tomorrow to review resumes from people interested in being on the facilities committee.
Okay. Communications, Gloria?
Yep, we met on December 7th. Marie covered a lot of what our business was, which basically was community engagement. One of the discussions we had was how to proceed and, you know, we've tried in the past things like those conversations in the evening and we just, we all agreed that the participation from the community, their involvement was much greater when we tried last year the digital survey. I mean, we really got a feel for what people had in mind. So we're moving ahead with that. As Marie said, we'll be talking about that tomorrow morning when we meet at eight. Thursday. I mean Thursday. Sorry. Thursday morning at eight when we meet. We have three more budget vignettes. Thank you Neil for doing these. January 23rd will be on transportation, February 13th will be on the state budget, we hope, update and state aid, and March 6th will be the draft budget. So we're looking for that. And as I say, we'll be working on the... We talked a little bit about with the survey, making it a little longer. Last year was our first attempt at it and we were kind of, came up with the idea a little bit later than we'd hoped, so this year we have a little more time. So we're talking about putting it out there instead of for two weeks, for four. So have a nice long window for people and to get word out through backpack mail, through SNNs, putting written ones at the library, the Y, different places in the community so that we really try to get the community's, you know, input on how we should approach this year with the budget. And we'll be meeting tomorrow morning, oh, Thursday morning? Tomorrow morning's business practices. Thursday morning, communication at 8:00 AM.
At Farnsworth, right?
At Farnsworth. Thank you, Seema, yes.
Thank you Gloria. Next we move to policy, Barbara?
Our meeting again February 5th at 5:00.
Okay, great. And now, public comment number two. Linda, did anybody sign up? Okay.
Oh, there's somebody waving us down.
Got a gentleman coming to the mic?
I just wanted to acknowledge that there was a retirement on the consent agenda. Stan Dean, our director of custodial services. Stan's worked for this district for 33 years. Custodial worker, head custodian, and basically my, you know, wingman for the past eight-plus years. He's retiring at the end of the month. I just want to wish him well. He will be missed, he'll be hard to replace. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
In a similar spirit, Mr. Lutzick's resignation for the purposes of retirement, we're also on the consent agenda, so we want to thank you for your service and wish you well.
Thank you. And the final item on our agenda this evening is board issues, ideas, and sharing. Does anybody have anything they would like to add? Barbara?
I just have a question about why the young ladies were here about their club. Is there... I think we approved it, so is there a problem with the title?
I sent to Christine, well, I'll have to look into it. We approved the clubs before its name. I think the name changed before it came to the board. So Tom, we congratulated on your retirement and now you can come up to the podium and help us understand.
We did approve the club, but as we have done with other clubs that try to target a specific population, we want to be as inclusive as possible. We don't have a boys' engineering club and a girls' engineering club. If we did, I think that would be okay, but to single people out, we're just a little uncomfortable with that, so...
Would we not approve if a group of boys came forward and wanted to do that? I mean, the young lady said that anybody is welcome to attend the meetings and the whole purpose of the get-together, so to speak, is to encourage women to join the engineering field. So, I mean, I personally don't have a problem with it, but I don't know if we have to have a say in it or they can choose their own name.
Well, I believe Ms. McManus consulted our attorneys and I believe that they felt more comfortable in doing this. I'll follow up on that and double check, but I believe that's where that stems from.
Sad state of affairs.
Yeah, their mission is clear.
Yeah, exactly.
So I think we just need to investigate further then.
Yeah, and I'll look into that first thing.
Okay.
Okay. I'll let Dr. Wiles know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seema?
I have, I guess, one, two questions. The emails that go from the website for the board, do we get them? I don't know if there's like a form or does it go through Linda Livingston? Because there were a couple of people that asked me, oh, did you get an email? I filled it out at the board website and I said no. So I didn't know, like, do we get... I think it says, right, that the emails get to the board from there? So I just wanted to make sure that... I just wanted to ask about that in case there was like some miscommunication or something.
I think generally, budget-related emails that go to that general email address are then posted on the board portal, but if it's unrelated to budget and it just goes through that process, what happens?
I don't know that we have any. I mean, what we typically do is when they come to that, is the superintendent, not Wiles, but the general superintendent one, address. When new ones come, we post them as they come in. We have not had any new ones since the last time we shared them, so I'm kind... I don't know where that email would have went to. It said to the board or...
You mean, say, an email that's not related to the budget? That's just a general issue. You would post that to the portal enough? Because sometimes they're sent to Linda and then it's forwarded to the board.
Right, right, that's what I was wondering.
I'm not sure which category it falls into. If it comes to me under the superintendent and it's related to the board, sometimes it's totally not. It's about other kinds of issues, but if it's addressed to the board, then Linda would forward it on. Any of those budget-related ones, we forward on in the Friday update, so... Do you know what the topic was?
I don't remember. I mean, they didn't get into details, but I think, I thought they said they emailed maybe Linda or they said like on the board website, like the district website, so I didn't go look, you know, at that, but then I just said, I don't know, I'll ask. I didn't get anything.
And that was unrelated to budget?
I think, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, anything that comes in, addressed to the board, should be posted. It always has been.
Yeah, it's forwarded to us, right. We've always got...
So we should get it.
Posted or forwarded?
Forwarded to us.
Forwarded to us as an email.
Ordered to us as an email, yeah.
Yes, and we post the budget-related ones.
In the portal?
Yes.
Yeah, but we get them.
You get them, yes.
They come to us.
On the second one, I don't know if it's worth mentioning that next week when they put out the... or whenever the digital survey goes out about the budget, there's going to be one or a question about just getting a sense of how people have... how people are, how comfortable they are with the start, the start time and just that discussion.
Well, we talked about that one and the cobblestone school, just to get a pulse on the community's feelings regarding those two issues, so...
I just wanted to put that out there.
We hadn't finalized it, but you're right, those two did come up, thanks.
Just in case people are wanting to, you know, have some input, that there would be like an opportunity there.
Could be a way of taking a pulse of the community. Those are two identified topics.
That's it.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything? You looked like you were gonna...
No.
Okay. So there's nothing else to come before the board. Now we just need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Alan, second.
We get a lot of those.
Gloria? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Thank you.
Thank you Christine.
Thank you.